I'm going to ask everyone to stand in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flags behind me and to remain standing and to remember all those who are serving across the world, and also that today was a day of mourning for President Bush. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to thank everyone for attending the Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting of December 5, 2018. Introduce the board members. To my left, Robert Anzalone, Sandra Capiglione, Chris Gerver, Secretary Gail Knogel. Over to my far right, we have John Collins, traffic engineer, Dennis Lindsay, engineer, Rick Golden, our attorney, and Stu Turner, our planner. And I'm Maria Hunter, your chairperson. Board members, have you had a chance to review the minutes from November 7, 2018? If so, do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is Orange and Rockland Public Hearing for Site Plan and Special Permit for the Proposed Expansion of the Harriman Electrical Substation on Melody Lane and Construction of a Transition Yard Located in Woodbury Common Parking Lot. Said property is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps as Section 225, Lot 1, Blocks 13 and 70.2. Who's here for the applicant? You can take them over there, please. Give us a brief overview, and then we'll go right into the public hearing. Underneath the one side, there should be a button there. There you go.
Very good. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, staff. My name is Lena Osharuta, partner of the law firm Montalbano Condon &amp; Frank, on behalf of Orange and Rockland Utilities. As you so stated, Madam Chair, we're here tonight for site plan and special permit approval for our project, which, as you know, just to give you a brief overview, ONR is part of the Route 17 Interstate 86 interchange project. We were forced, because the New York State DOT had wanted us to remove some overhead lines and put them underground. That's what precipitated this project. So with respect to what we're looking for for approvals, we have a transition yard that is being proposed, and this is a transition yard to have overhead lines go underground. Also, we're expanding our substation, our existing substation, to install new potheads and bus stands. At the last meeting, we were here back in November, this board granted a NEG DEC under SECRE, it was an enlisted action. We obtained variances for this project already by the zoning board, so we're really here tonight for a public hearing. I have our staff here, our engineer, for any questions that you or the public may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Notices here are given that the Village of Woodbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing at 7:30 PM on Wednesday, December 5, 2018, at Woodbury Village Hall, 455 Route 32, Highland Mills, New York. In a matter of the application of Orange and Rockland for site plan and special permit for the proposed expansion of the Harriman Electrical Substation on Melody Lane and construction of a transition yard located in Woodbury Common Parking Lot. Said property is known in the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps as Section 225, Lot 1, Blocks 13 and 70.2, and this was published in the Times Herald Record on Friday, November 30. Board members, with that being said, can I go out and open up the public hearing?
Yes.
All right. I'm going to ask you to step to the side so anyone from the public will come up. Anyone in the -- please just keep cutting out. Why it's happening. Anyone in the first row that would like to come up and speak about ONR applications for either location? Second row? You know the drill.
Robin Kraus, Highland Mills. I have some concerns about the transition yard at Woodbury Common in relation to its very close proximity to the Coffee Cemetery, which dates back to the 1700s. My concern stems from, while I admittedly am not familiar with the industry, I imagine, though, there would be heavy equipment used to put these structures in and the poles and whatnot, so I'm somewhat fearful that it might undermine the cemetery, or things, you know, do happen. Hope it won't, but that would damage the cemetery wall and/or particularly the, you know, stones that are left, again, dating back to the 1700s. It'd be impossible to replace. So I'm asking certainly that, well, two things, actually, that another location be secured. I did go to the ZBA meeting, so I did hear about two different possibilities, one being at the Route 32 entrance to the outlet center, which I totally agree with the applicant, would be, you know, horrible, but I would still like to see another location discovered. At the very least, in absence of that, to put the structures and the pole as far away from the cemetery as humanly possible, given the industry and what needs to be done with transition lines and so forth. So if that can't be done, I'm asking that a condition be placed in the resolution that if such an occurrence would occur with damage to the cemetery, that it would be solely borne the cost and repair of ONR. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the second row? Anyone in a third row? Anyone standing that would like to speak on this application? Is there a fourth row back there? No, back of the room? Okay. Without anyone else coming forward, what do I have, a motion from the board members of the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
To close it?
To close it.
Do you have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Robert, do you have any thoughts or concerns?
No, I think everything has been explored.
Sandy, any thoughts, concerns?
Just what Robin said, is there, do they, can they have to bond any, like a, not a maintenance bond, but a, for damages, anything for damages?
On the bottom, on the opposite, there you go. You'd like to un.
Testing. We have requirements for bonding. In this particular instance, the only bond that I think might be applicable is a restoration bond. We, or we, the village, in the event that they didn't complete the work, would not go in and complete a substation. We have bonds, as you know, for some performance bonds, where we collect money so that the municipality can go in and complete the work if necessary. In site plans, typically, we take a restoration bond, and all of this is we would take money to secure the site, to make sure it's not dangerous, to make sure it's repaired, if in fact the developer were to walk away. Orange and Rockland is somewhat unusual in that case, and I'm not sure if they have any bonds on file with the town, with the village, so I'll have to take a look at that, but typically, we do take a restoration bond.
Okay. Is there, what value, or how's that value determined?
Restoration bonds are, quite frankly, they have been engineers' judgment. We have collected bonds from Woodbury Common, we've collected bonds from Woodbury Center, from Cabela's at one time, and for smaller developments. They ranged, in my recollection, from about $50,000 up to about $40,000, depending on the size and nature of the development.
Could we consider making that part of the resolution? We can't force bonds, if I'm correct, Rick? That's up to the village board members?
Well, Dick, there is a provision for a restoration bond, which restores the site if they don't go forward. That's not what was raised here. So there's no specific provision in the code for a restoration bond to protect an adjacent cemetery. If that's what you were hoping.
Well, yeah, so there's no vehicle to do that. Why are we interrupting the applicant when you're finished?
Okay. Obviously, if the board requires a restoration bond, the applicant can, if it wants to volunteer, agree that also encompassed within that same restoration bond, without any additional monies being put in, would also cover any potential damage that was demonstrated was the direct result of the applicant's operations, then we could fashion a restoration bond in such a manner. But it wouldn't be something that you have a provision in the code to require. It'd be an extraordinary bond.
Okay. That's all. I think the applicant would like to respond to that.
Yeah, just with respect to the cemetery, a couple of things. I know we stated at the last meeting, also this ZBA, and I know our engineers here have stated as well, that we had agreed to whatever, and you can want to speak to it, Jim, to put in a plan in place to make sure that if anything does happen to that cemetery, and just so you know, in terms of the work that's being done, we're nowhere near it in terms of the cemetery. I know that your code had a buffer requirement, we're not subject to that, but regardless, we're still putting protocols in place to make sure that we're not going to even come near that cemetery, or we're putting in a plan in place, an environmental plan, just to make sure if anything does happen, that we would in fact repair whatever was damaged. But again, this work is not going to be anywhere near that cemetery. So again, we don't think the bond is warranted in this type of restoration bond. I know what you're talking about, it really doesn't apply here with respect to the cemetery, but ONR has agreed to look at the cemetery issue and obviously put all the safety protocols in place, so that we're nowhere near it during construction. And again, we stated this at the zoning board as well, and at the last meeting, we've always stated that. Thank you.
I would suggest to the board that you probably should have a condition that requires a pre-construction evaluation with photos of the cemetery. The cemetery is not in perfect condition, it's an old cemetery, and it's part of the rustic charm of the cemetery, if you will. Some of the gravestones may be damaged, things like that, so that there's no question about if something falls, whether it actually impacted it or that previous damage.
And that is something that we can put into the resolution, that we request that certain pitches be taken beforehand and for project and after project, and.
You do that, you have done that previously, when there was questions of either blasting or downstream soil erosion, downstream impacts on drainage ways. You have had fashioned conditions of that in the past.
Okay. Anything else, Sandy?
No, that's it.
Chris?
One concern I have, and more for the consultants, to ask if this is something we can do. With the poles that are being removed on the Monroe Woodbury School District property, there's a common preservative, penta-chloral penol that's normally in those poles, that has been shown to leach into the grounds. Can we make it a requirement of the resolution that testing be performed for the presence of that preservative and remediation on the school grounds?
You might want to ask the applicant whether they have any proactive programs, or whether there's anything that they do on that, or whether there's any regulations that apply to that, and then after you hear from them, if there is anything that may influence what you want to do.
But do we have any standing, if the poles are on property, other than the Harriman Substation and Woodbury Common?
It's off.
That's off-site.
It's off of the site.
That's off-site.
This is on the school site, you're talking about?
Yes, the school site.
So how do we?
That's not actually part of this.
You wouldn't be able to do it as part of this resolution. This resolution has a definite area that you are approving with respect to this work, and the law is that you're not allowed to require off-site improvements as sort of a condition of granting approval on this, unless it's somehow related on the SECRE and other things. But under these circumstances, no, the courts have said that you're not allowed to say, "All right, we'll give you this, but you have to perform this service," basically, that's off-site, and they say you're not allowed to do that.
Would that be an issue for Monroe Woodbury School District, though?
I don't know if they need any approvals from Monroe Woodbury School District. If Monroe Woodbury School District is required to give them an approval, they certainly, in my opinion, could condition that approval on reasonable conditions, but I don't know whether or not they need their permission.
Chris, anything else?
No, that's it.
Rick, anything on this public hearing?
No, I'm good.
All right. Board members, your pleasure with, I have two separate resolutions, one for the Harriman Substation and one for Woodbury Common. Can I go forward and read them?
Yes.
Do you want to close the public hearing first?
Oh, we did, didn't we?
Did you? I didn't hear.
I didn't hear.
Yeah, we did.
Sorry, Ms. [inaudible].
Sandy, then, and Robert, and then we said yes, we're closing the public hearing. We did all the SECRE, we did that. We must have action intended to be, yeah, we did all that, so I can move forward. All right, so I have a draft resolution of approval with conditions for second amended site plan, special permit, freshwater wetland permit for Orange and Rockland Utilities, Inc., Harriman Substation. I should ask, applicant, you're okay with this? If I can proceed forward?
We understand it's a draft resolution that was circulated. The only, just minor change we had to that, one of the resolutions referred to, and this is specifically the transition yard resolution, talks about.
Right, that's not the one that she's reading now.
Okay, gotcha, I thought it was something else, but yeah, that was the only thing, and I'll forward that brief comment to you, Rick.
Okay. All right, so this is the one for the Harriman Substation. So make sure, we're going to jump to page. On page four, where it says, "Public hearing." Public hearing on this application, including the freshwater wetland permit, was held on December 5, 2018, and closed on the same date. So, number five, page five, we're going to jump to page six, specific conditions, and this is for the Harriman Substation. Number one, all conditions attached to the original grant of site plan and special permit approval, no subsequent amendments, as well as all SECRE findings, are to remain in full force and effect, and this approval is subject to and conditioned upon satisfaction of the same as if those conditions were set forth herein at length. Two, all light levels must be limited to 0.1-foot candles at the property line, so no off-site glare will result. The fixtures shall meet IDA, LED, or green globes criteria for nighttime friendly or dark-skY lighting. Any wallpaper fixtures shall include non-glare full-cut-off shields. Three, the applicant may only proceed with its improvements to the extent allowed by the variances granted by the Village Zoning Board of Appeals, decision dated November 14, 2018, and shall comply with any and all conditions of said condition. Four, by this approval, the planning board chairperson is authorized to sign the Village of Woodbury Code, Chapter 165, freshwater wetland permit, to be prepared by the planning board attorney in accordance with Chapter 165. Said permit shall include the required code Section 165-9 conditions of said permit, together with any additional conditions authorized by the planning board as a result of the public hearings, comments, or otherwise. The freshwater wetland permit shall be signed by the chairperson prior to the signing of the plans for the project, and shall be attached to the filed copy of this resolution. Five, as provided in the Village of Woodbury Code, Section 165-12, the planning board requires that prior to the commencement of work under the freshwater wetland permit, the committee shall post a cash or surety bond with the Village of Woodbury in amount as recommended by the Village of Woodbury Engineer, conditioned upon the faithful compliance with the terms of the freshwater wetland permit, and for the indemnification of the Village of Woodbury, the restoration costs resulting from any such failure to do so comply. This bond shall be in favor of the Village of Woodbury, and be in such form as acceptable to the planning board attorney, in parentheses, the attorney for the Village of Woodbury designated for this purpose. The bond shall remain in effect until the planning board certifies based upon input from the Village of Woodbury Engineers, that the work has been completed and the wetland and its functionality has been established, or has been wise provided in Village of Woodbury Code, Section 165-12. Six, prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall revise the plans in accordance with the memorandum of the town engineer dated August 10, 2018, to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Seven, prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall revise the plans to include a sign with the applicant's emergency contact information, and provide to the building department and the emergency service organizations that emergency contact information. And that's the specific conditions. Just to make sure there's nothing else that's right there. Board members, on the resolution for Harriman Substation, do I have a motion to accept what I have read?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Was that Rich also?
Yes.
And I say aye, so that's five. Then I have the draft resolution of approval with conditions of site plan and special permit for Orange and Rockland Utilities, Inc., Transition Yard at Woodbury Common. Again, on page four, public hearing, a public hearing on this application was held on December 5, 2018, and closed on the same date. Page five, we have specific conditions. All light levels, number one, all light levels must be limited to 0.1-foot candles at the property line, so no off-site glare will result. The fixtures shall meet IDA, LED, or green globes criteria for nighttime friendly or dark-skY lighting. Any wallpaper fixtures shall include non-glare full-cut-off shields. Two, the applicant may only proceed with some improvement to the extent allowed by the variances granted by the Village Zoning Board of Appeals dated November 14, 2018, and shall comply with any and all conditions of said decision. Three, prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall revise the plans in accordance with the memorandum of the town engineer dated August 10, 2018, to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Four, prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall revise the plans to include a sign with the applicant's emergency contact information.
Thank you.
And provide to the building department and emergency service organizations that emergency contact information. Rick, am I missing anything on this?
Just a second, yes.
Okay.
Two places.
Where'd you, where'd you just leave this?
Open language in the cemetery.
You're not in the special conditions.
I'll let you know what I'm doing in a second.
No problem.
Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain. Where is he, the other one? Right below him. All right, I have a couple of slight modifications. In the findings section on page four, it said the planning board has determined that approval of the second amended site plan and freshwater wetland permit, freshwater wetland permit should be deleted, so it should be second amended site plan and special permit. There is no freshwater wetland permit required in this location. Then in specific condition number three, in two locations, it should be village engineer rather than town engineer. And I have added a fifth specific condition, which I will read quickly so you can understand it, then I'll read slowly, whoever wants to take it down. It is mandated that there be a pre-construction meeting with the village engineer and building inspector that shall require, at a minimum, a plan of operations, including relevant safety protections, and photos of the area of development and the adjacent cemetery to memorialize the condition of the cemetery for documentation, if necessary, of any damage that may occur as a result of the improvement approved herein. Want me to read it more slowly?
I just want to make sure the applicant is okay with that, the addition of that number five.
We are. Thank you.
You can wait there. If you want to sit down. Read it one more time so the board members can hear it.
It is mandated that there be a pre-construction meeting with the village engineer and building inspector. What did I say, with the applicant village engineer and building inspector? Applicants representatives, village engineer, and building inspector, that shall require, comma, at a minimum, comma, a plan of operations, comma, including relevant safety protections, comma, and photos of the area of development, and the adjacent cemetery to memorialize the condition of the cemetery for documentation, if necessary, of any damage, actually, it should be for documentation of, take out if necessary, for any documentation, for documentation of any damage that may occur as a result of the improvement
Board members, are you okay with the addition of number five?
Yes.
Applicant, you're okay with the resolution as read, the changes made?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
With all that being said, board members, do I have a motion to approve this resolution with the additions and changes made here, for, set forth, and allow me to sign that resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Next application on the agenda is Coles ARV, public hearing for ARV revision to the department store building facade located within the Woodbury Center Shopping Center. Said property is located at 43 Center Drive in Central Valley, and is known in the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps as Section 225, Block 2, Lot 1.12. Is a representative here for Coles?
Yes.
Can you please come up to the podium? If you can, give us a brief overview, and just for the record, on November 19, we received ARV with renderings, and on November 20, we received a signed application for the planning
Good evening, my name's Bill Lewis, I'm with Richard Bowen, an associate of your architects for Coles Department Stores. Coles is looking to renovate their store at Woodbury Center. As part of that renovation, they're going to be reducing the size of the sales floor to approximately 1/3. They'll be constructing an interior demising wall, and then leasing back the remaining space to a future tenant. As part of that construction, they're going to be closing one of the two exterior entrances. That entrance will be infilled with materials to match the adjacent surfaces, in an attempt to create kind of a blank backdrop for the future tenant, who will bring in their own designers and create their own entrance for that portion of the building. So what we've presented is kind of an interim elevation that, you know, that will allow Coles to renovate their portion of this space, they'll create a kind of a white box shell for the future tenant, so they can come in then and do their improvements under, you know, a separate permit and control.
Okay, thank you. Board members, can I go out to the public for the public hearing? Consultants, do you have anything to add?
No, I have nothing to add.
All right, I'm just going to ask you to take a step back, see if I have anyone who wants to come forward. Anyone in the first row that wants to speak on this application? Second row? Third row? Back of the room, standing, sitting, along the sides? Board, what's the pleasure about the public hearing? Do I have a motion to close it?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that closure? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'm going to start with Sandy, since I started with you. Sandy, your thoughts, concerns?
I think we went over everything, I'm just, I don't know that we ever got.
I think we went over everything, I'm just, I don't know that we ever got a solid answer. The Coles sign that's on the end, I know that's going to be removed, is that, are you waiting, going to wait till the tenant comes in, or is that coming off as part of the renovation?
That's, that's going to be removed as part of this initial work, so we did add some, some notes to the submitted elevation, that that is going to be removed.
Yeah.
That will show up on the, on the construction set of documents-
Okay.
-for this portion.
Okay, that's all I had.
Chris?
I have nothing.
Rich?
I have nothing.
Robert?
Is there a timeline for when you're going to be doing this?
So, we've got, we've submitted drawings for permit a couple, couple weeks, months back. The intent is to start construction on a Coles portion in the spring, and the adjacent tenant is supposed, as soon as that space is, is turned over, they should immediately start their outfit. So, their, their drawings and designs, I know are underway, those should be showing in front of the town architecture, or the board, any, any meeting now, so. But, the intent is, the project, Coles, you know, will not renovate until all the lease agreements are signed and acknowledged that there will be a future tenant there moving in, it will remain vacant.
Okay, all right, thank you.
In our mailbox, we have the application. All right, board members, with everything being said, do you want me to read the resolution of approval?
Yes.
Resolution of approval with conditions, architectural review board approval for Woodbury Center Hermann LLC for Coles Department Store. Page two, public hearing was convened on December 5th, 2018, and closed on the same date. Page three, specific conditions. All conditions of prior approvals in connection with this property shall continue to be in full force and effect, and this resolution does not supersede or otherwise modify such prior approvals and conditions accepted specifically set forth in this resolution. Two, no building permit shall be issued authorizing a construction or renovation of structures inconsistent with the architectural renderings submitted to and approved by the architectural review board as part of this approval, or shall any certificate of occupancy be issued for any structures constructed and accepted performance with such renderings. Any deviations from renderings will require a further planning board review. Three, this resolution does not approve the plans submitted in connection with all these plans, item number seven, any future tenant of the space shall be required to apply to the planning board and/or ARB for review and approval. Anyone have any additions, additions, or questions?
I would suggest that on number three, just so that it's very clear, when it says plans, item number seven, I would just like to insert above, so it's clear that it's not an item seven on some plan sheet, but it's, when you look at the noted plans above in this resolution, item number seven is the one that is being referenced.
That door opened for some reason, I just got a breath of cold air. With the resolution read as is, applicant, you're okay with what I read?
Yes.
Board members, do I have a motion to accept this?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Sandy, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night. Next item on the agenda is Kimpco, Woodbury Center. There was a letter, extension request for previous approved ARB of proposed revisions to monument sign located at the entrance to Woodbury Center Shopping Center. Said property is located at intersection of Center Drive and Route 32, and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 225, block 2, lot 1.2. And, a letter received from Dominic Kordiska. His client is currently not ready to submit plans for signature within his timeframe. Put simply, the lease negotiations regarding the new store are still ongoing. Without the lease being finalized, there is no intention of changing the existing signage. I ask that the board grant a six-month extension for the submission of plans for signature. Rick, where do we, where do we extend that, what they, what so desires?
A six-month extension would be until the board's next May 15th, 2019 meeting. That's your last meeting prior to the six-month extension.
Board, board members, do you have any problem with granting your six-month extension to May 15th, 2019?
No.
No problem.
All right. I'll offer a motion that we grant the extension to go to May 15th, 2019. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is Rushmore State Farm and Winery, review and discuss site plan for proposed winery slash vineyard slash farm to include the construction of a new 4,000-square-foot winery and tasting room building. Said property is located at 14 Castleton Drive, and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 202, block 1, lots 70 and 79. Just for the record, we've received the response from the Orange County DPW on January 29th, 2018. On February 2nd, 2018, we received response back from the Orange County Department of Planning. Also, lead agency status was received from the Orange County Department of Planning on February 16th, March 21st, from the Orange County DPW. Just to note that there was a public hearing with the ZBA on April 11th of this year. We have received a traffic report from the applicant dated August 2018, and revised one November 2018. On October 16th, we received a letter from attorney Jay Myrow, and we've received memos from Mazer Consultant on November 13th, NPNV on November 29th, and on November 30th, from H2M, and we have plans that say revised 10-1-18. I think that covers all the things that we received since we last saw you. So, with that being said, please state your name for the record and give us a brief overview.
Sure, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Michael Bluestein, I'm with Bluestein Shapiro, Richard Baron, and Goshen, my partner Jay Myrow here, was here last January, or earlier than January, or this year in January, presenting the project for the first time. Here tonight with Larry Toro, the engineer from Civil Tech Engineering, Michael Galanti from Frederick P. Clark and Associates for the traffic study, as well as the applicant, Dr. Seth Pulver. I think the memo put together by Mr. Lindsay is dated the 30th, is fairly good, where he state, where he puts together the background is a fairly good start. This, this winery, there's a threshold issue with this, and that's whether or not the ZBA would give a variance to come across from Route 32, and without that variance, the project does not proceed. I've been to many ZBA meetings where matter was referred to as ZBA, and the ZBA is, you know, you polled the ZBA, and, you know, given what you see here, does this look good? Understanding full well that they can't formally vote until the lead agency does the secret determination. You know, most recently, I was before planning board, there was a large warehouse, and we needed a height variance and a parking variance, and, you know, basically, they said, sure, as soon as you come back and get your neck deck, it won't be a problem. Well, here, the threshold issue, of course, is the traffic on Ice House Road. The ZBA, when it was presented to them, basically, you know, when we asked, or when my partner polled the board, they basically said, we really, we really don't, we don't have enough information to make any sort of recommendation, which is appropriate. Since that meeting in, in, in April, the traffic consultant's been engaged, he prepared a report, it's been revised, and basically, now we're back here before the planning board to, to begin the site plan process. What we're hoping to do is, obviously, we feel like within the site plan, fairly everything can be addressed with the town, with the village and its consultants, but what we're hoping to do is get some sort of, before we do a full-blown secret process, you know, we're not Woodbury Common, we're not Orange and Rockland, we're not billion-dollar enterprises, this is a local resident, a local resident in the community for a long time, we're hoping that we can somehow move the process forward without doing the whole architectural review and doing the entire site plan, but we could focus on the traffic portion of it, so that the planning board could perhaps give a, a limited refining or limited review, so that we can go back to the ZBA and see if this project, and hopefully that this project gets, you know, a solid presentation for the ZBA, so that they can look favorably upon the variance request. Because otherwise, the applicant can spend $50,000 to $100,000, hopefully not in, in, in fees, for a project that if we can't get the variance, is dead in the water. So, we're here to start the process, it's been a year, but we've now done the traffic study, we feel like we're ready to move forward.
Thank you.
Maria, can I just-
Yep.
-say something? First of all, I don't think $100,000 is anywhere near what fees we're talking about, so I don't think we need to use any hyperbole to try to set out the issue here. The issue is simply that the law requires, on a coordinated review, exactly what we're doing between these two agencies, and there is some inefficiency in that regard, but that's owing to the SEACER regulations, not due to the Village of Woodbury. As you know, and you stated, before the ZBA can actually make a determination, SEACER has to be completed, and although the village board can, I mean, the planning board can go ahead and concentrate on one aspect of SEACER, such as traffic, that's not going to complete SEACER, they, but at some point in time, they will complete SEACER. If what you're asking is that, you ask that the planning board look at the traffic in the first instance, and get some comments from the consultant and the planning board members with respect to traffic, and then take that interim discussion to the ZBA, and if you believe that the ZBA, based upon that interim discussion, can move it forward, including, they could have a public hearing and discussion themselves, just not make the final determination, and then it would return back to the planning board for their completion of SEACER, at which point afterwards, the ZBA can go ahead and make their determination. Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure that everything was, was very clear. So, really, all, the applicant is asking to go ahead and for you to just concentrate now, as a priority, the traffic issues, and take it as far as you believe you're comfortable taking it, and then that might be enough information for the ZBA, once they hear about that, to further their application. You can continue on with your other issues in the meantime, and at some point in time, you will be completing SEACER. Obviously, traffic is a, likely one of your bigger issues with respect to this. And there's also some of these issues, although they're relevant to SEACER, as far as having to be addressed, they may not be things that really rise to the level of a significant adverse impact, so they, even, so that you can address those issues, not necessarily totally within SEACER, you can go ahead and address them as part of your site plan powers, including some traffic issues, so that it's not something where things have to be held up for a long time, you can go ahead and, and even if you conclude SEACER, you still have the powers to go ahead and address many of these issues even outside of the SEACER process. But I think it would be appropriate to go ahead and focus initially on the traffic issue, to try to move the application forward between the two boards.
Board members, with that being said, I'm going to alter the way I do things and go to our technical consultant, if you'd like to comment on the two reports that you-
Well, I'll comment on the first report. The second, the second, the second report has just arrived within the last week, so I won't comment on that. The first thing we wanted to find out is the fact is that we need a detailed narrative with respect to how the winery is going to operate, because it's, a winery can cover a multitude of issues. It can be used as just a very simple tasting room, or it could be used for events. So, we want to make sure that we have a clear narrative, a clear description as to how that winery is going to be used, that, for example, there is a winery located about a mile, a little, little over a mile to the north, and they have, they're open from May through September, and have live music on Friday and Saturday weekends, et cetera. I want to know what the magnitude is and-
They're open all year.
Oh, they're open all year, okay. So, the fact is that we want to find out what, whether this winery is going to be open all year, whether, what the intent is, et cetera. And that goes also to the site plan, because looking at the site plan, the way the site plan appears, there's not sufficient parking to take care of that kind of loading.
And just to add to that, it's outside from May through September, and it's a part of October, where there's a larger crowd-
Larger crowd.
Where it's year-round, where it's-
It's inside.
Right, because it's a dynamics of a different traffic.
Right, so, we're looking at what the narrative is and what the operation is. Secondly, the fact is, we looked at the locations to be studied, and we suggested that there would be others evaluated, and we also looked at the counts on 22, respective machine counts, and we've requested that a Friday night be evaluated as part of it. Now, many of these, they may have already been included in the, in the new study, but I'm not commenting on that. Basically, it's a matter of finding out what the magnitude is, what the operation is, and how the estimates of traffic can be generated, because we want to make sure that, and the hours that traffic will arrive, is it going to be a late-night crowd, is it going to be a, you know? I go to wine tastings in a winery, but it's usually afternoons, have a glass of wine, that's it, and then a loud music, I'm getting a little too old for that, that's, that's a different issue. So, that's the nature of it, and then that, with that information, then we can look at what the magnitude of the traffic and the impact on the roadway system as well as the magnitude is. That's a quick summary as to what we're thinking.
Okay. Dennis?
Yes, we provided a six-page memo that included a number of comments. I'm not going to go through all that, but I am going to go through and touch on those items that might be related to the SEACER action that you're considering. In terms of the report, we gave initial comments on SEACER, on your review of that, and also we gave comments on site plan and special permit, and that was basically for the applicant, and for the board, I mean, if you think you require some of those materials now, you can request them, but we wanted to give, for whatever we have reviewed, we want to give the applicant the full benefit of our comments, so that they could address that later on when they come back for a site plan application, if they are successful before the ZBA. In terms of the SEACER and the EAF that was filed, there's some inconsistency on the areas, I think they should look at that, and you should have a complete summary that's consistent throughout with the plan and with the EAF. We noted the differences, the applicant can either explain them or just correct things if there's an error in there. In terms of traffic, we defer to John and to Mazer for the traffic expertise that they'll give you in terms of that, but I will tell you that I was here in the 1990s, when the Rushmore Festival was taking place, and there was some traffic related to that, and to the people that lived along Ice House Road and along that area, they were very sensitive in terms of additional traffic on that road, somewhat because of its condition, which this applicant is saying they will address, but somewhat simply because of the traffic going in, on this quiet road. So, that would be something you'd want to consider. In terms of whether there's at least one significant environmental impact, we believe that there are a number of things that you need to consider. One is the, is there a substantial adverse change in traffic? There is a removal of a large quantity of vegetation here, but it's to be replaced, and that's trees, they're going to be replaced by vineyards. There's going to be a temporary impact, but that's something you would consider under the SEACER regs. Whether there's a substantial impact on threatened or endangered species. You may recall when the Rushmore application came in, which wrapped around this structure, and actually was this property at one time, or a lead part of it, there are rattlesnakes in that area, which are a threatening environmental species, and the DEC had specific regulations attached to the Rushmore application. The applicant will have to take a look and see what they need to do in terms of any applications with that regard. There is a snake fence, all along, you may be familiar with that, along the Rushmore property, to prevent the interaction, hopefully, between the snakes and the residents. Quite honestly, it's probably for the benefit of the snakes. Quite honestly, it's probably for the benefit of the snakes, to try to protect them, from the DEC's perspective.
They've been known to go around to the edge of the fence.
Come around?
Some of them have been tagged, and over the years, they've been known to circumvent the fence.
Okay, and the last one I have on the SEACER regs in terms of things that I thought were appropriate for your consideration for a substantial environmental impact, is impact on the quality of historical or neighborhood character, and I'll get into that just a little bit here. Under zoning, the winery must possess a New York State license for a farm winery, and the applicant should confirm that they have, or they will do that. The winery has to have direct access to New York State Route 32, which is a fundamental item here, and which is why they're before the ZBA. And one other item that may not be immediately apparent, it may take some interpretation, is the matter of where structures, where the structures of a local or national historic significance are located on the site. Any new structures must be, to the extent maximum practical, consistent with the existing structures. In my opinion, and this is for the board, we, I think that the site does include structures of at least a locally historic significance with the Rushmore estate. And if that's the case, the structure that they're proposing, this 4,000-square-foot structure, should not interfere or impact that, and we don't have any information on the structure and what it's going to look like. Could be very aesthetically pleasing and fit right into the character, but I don't know that right now, and that's something you may want to consider. The rest of our report is on site plan issues, water, sewer, drainage. I don't mean to minimize those, but I don't think for this type of development, those can't be mitigated, and they would rise to any significant environmental impact if they take appropriate mitigation measures. And they say in here, and their report said that they were going to connect to central water and sewer, so that should be a significant mitigation.
Thank you.
And unless you have anything else, any other questions on the report, that's what I have for now.
Stu?
Yes, actually, Mr. Booskin didn't mention our report, I don't think, and I hope you have, I hope you have it.
Just bring the whole scan forward.
Pardon me. You have, do you have it? Or does Jack have? Our report for men, me? Yeah, I, I had a suspicion you didn't, because you didn't mention it, but it's not, it's not long and extensive, and it sort of tries to address the gap between exactly what you're trying to push at this point, and I think Rick had sort of outlined it for the board. To make a determination on SEACER, I think, you know, we do need additional information, but the board can decide whether they want to, you know, they want to require you to submit additional information, such as the matters related to the vegetation, taking out the vegetation, and the visual impact. I think, you know, you've incorporated into the application, and the board has a generic building. We, I think the board wants to be sure that whatever is there in terms of the impact on the neighborhood, the quality of the architecture, its scale and so on, is consistent with what's there and what's around there. So I think that, my opinion on that issue, is that they probably need more information, even with regard to SEACER. Whether they want to complete SEACER at this point, Rick outlined, you know, what their options are. The board asked me to look primarily at issues related to the site plan and landscaping and vegetation and the environmental issues, and I, you know, at this point, I think there is, you know that there is additional information that would be required in terms of the landscaping and vegetation on the final plan, and I don't know if it's going to rise to the level of being significant impact. I think the board will, based on what Dennis has said, based on what we've said, will decide whether they want significant additional information at this point. I think the traffic has been the big issue, and Dr. Collins has addressed that, so I don't need to go into all of the items. There is going to be a significant change, I think, even in the character of the road, the access road, once a decision is made on, you know, you said you're going to improve that road, and it will be significantly different than it is now. Those neighbors will have a different road going through there, and I'm sure you've all been through there. It's, it's not a, you're not a high-level street. It's a private street, and it's not totally paved, and it's going to go through to the property itself, to the proposed property. So it'll be very different, and I think that was, I think one of the items Dennis mentioned in terms of the impact on the character of the neighborhood. So those, those are really the things, the issue of the vegetation, the visual impact at this point, I think are significant in terms of the board considering a neck deck. And as you said, or in response to Rick's question, if you're satisfied just going back to the ZBA without a final SEACER determination, that's your call. I just, I just would, frankly, I'd recommend the board try to go as far as they can, because that's the policy that we've been pursuing in recent years, is when there's a, when there's a coordinated review, the ZBA has usually deferred to the planning board to complete SEACER before they make their decision. Doesn't always have to be that way, as Rick has pointed out, so.
Excuse me, you have to use the microphone, but we--
Yes, I know, I know he owns the road, yes.
All right. Rick?
Thank you, Stu.
Yeah, one of the reasons that this is, is at least cause for you to treat a little bit differently than you have others in the past, is that they're not going before the variance, they're not going before the ZBA for variance that are sort of run-of-the-mill types of variances that go back and forth of height or setbacks or things that are part of the site plan, that makes sense to address those ahead of time. This is really whether or not they're going to be able to have that use at all, whether they're going to be able to come in off of the road or not, whether the ZBA is going to go ahead and say, no, we're not going to vary that aspect of the requirements, and therefore you're completely shut out. So it's a little bit different in that regard, which is why it may make sense, if the board is agreeable to do so, to go ahead and focus first on traffic, which is something that's very much related to that aspect of the variance. The one thing that you can do today, in addition to discussing any more with respect to the traffic, is you could assume lead agency at this point in time.
Thank you. I thought we did. Before I go any further, so we don't forget, I'll offer a motion that we declare ourselves lead agent. Do I have a second?
A second.
Robert, I got you first. Any discussion on lead agency status? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have to work harder next time, Chris.
Chris, I'm going to start with you. Thoughts, concerns, questions? Is the applicant, where's the applicant? Okay, you have it. Chris, go ahead.
I'm going to skip right now.
You're going to skip?
Yes.
Rich, thoughts, concerns?
I don't know, just don't.
Robert?
I just wish we knew more about the questions that John asked, such as, you know, what events are going to be planned, what hours, and what it's going to be year-round. You know, that would definitely help us understand about the traffic situation.
Okay, Sandy?
As far as the widening of the road to 24 feet, is that within, that's not within the roadway right now? You have, there have to be easements all the way?
There's one shown.
Right, but--
There's one shown, and I'm not sure if that's a proposed easement, or if that is an existing easement that you're going to occupy.
Good evening, Larry Toro, Civil Tech. Mr. Pulver acquired that property, that easement is on, he owns that now, and what he's going to do is grant himself an easement for the widening of that road. So it's not an existing, it's not an existing easement right now, it's proposed.
He owns the entire lot?
He bought the whole lot, yes.
So he bought the whole lot, and he's giving the owner of the Rushmore estate that easement?
Correct.
Okay.
But you're talking about the Ice House Road itself, aren't you?
I'm talking about--
That's Ice House Road. That is Ice House Road.
Right, so--
Is it currently 24, how wide is that?
Currently, it's around 20 feet wide.
Okay.
And we're proposing to widen it to 24 feet, there was an issue with--
Okay, I guess, and is it going to be paved? Is it going to be from Quake all the way to the driveway? And I guess to continue with what Sandy's saying, the width of that currently right now, does it show on any of the maps where the property lines are for the people that live there right now?
Yeah.
Are they encompassing any of their property?
That's what I'm trying to get at.
That's what I guess we're getting at. How wide is, how wide do you go from edge to edge of that road and where the people live? How wide is the property line, you know?
The edge of the roadway is to stay within Mr. Pulver's property, that tail that that road is in is what is involved with the cost. So will it impact any of the, as far as encroaching on--
Right. Just to clarify, though, the road and the piece of property that it goes through belongs to Dr. Pulver, but isn't that part of the same lot where the winery is? In other words, that's, and that's where they gain their frontage?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Just, it's not the report we asked about details on drainage or details on the roadway. It wasn't showing the surfacing of that main roadway. I mean, it's always been referred to as the Red Shale Road, as has been referred to that. I'm not sure about the impervious nature of it, and if you're widening and you're making it all impervious, we'll have to talk, we'll have to look at it. Stormwater management.
Okay, just looking for what you're proposing, and if you do propose to make it all impervious, there'll be an additional burden on for stormwater.
Sandy, you have more?
Yeah, and, excuse me, I don't mean to, as I usually say, beat a dead horse, but I'm confused as far as, when you talk about the property that now you're saying Mr. or Dr. Pulver bought, are you talking about, where are you talking about on that map, or on this map?
Could you explain what they're setting up here? Could you explain why or how the person who owns the property is going to grant himself an easement with respect to this road? I don't understand how that legally happens.
Different entity.
It is a different entity? I thought he was saying he was going to grant it to himself. That's what I couldn't understand.
Can you use your microphone, please?
It's a different entity. He bought the whole leaseure, he got the house, which is where the road to IUC Y. So he could give, give, the property owner of the private road, he can give an easement to this piece of property. To this is what I'm curious about. As long as you make it clear somehow as to who owns the property and to whom the easement is going to be granting, as it's a different entity, then we'll be able to look at it just clearly.
Is that the one in the corner, Sandy?
Right.
Which property is that on that map?
Where it goes down to Quaker.
This part will be--
Larry, you got the bigger one? Yeah, that'll play with you, but it's blown up.
I don't have it all.
That's, that's a--
Okay, well, he has to blow over that, you can see the easement.
So as you go from Quaker onto Ice House, he owns that corner in the left side.
Okay, but--
You don't go into that easement very much, just going slightly--
No.
Yeah.
Okay, but right now, today, the Ice House Road is approximately 20 feet wide?
Correct.
All the way up?
Correct.
To the stone that blocks it, so you don't have access to Mr. Pulver's main property.
Right, okay. So you're widening that whole thing 20 to 24 feet?
Correct.
So if, what about these other properties? Are you encroaching on their properties to get that? So where is that property coming from, then?
Wait, sometimes there's a misunderstanding in terms of roadway width and right-of-way width, all right? They have a road maybe 20 feet wide, but through most of this area, the right-of-way that they have, that's not encroaching on anyone else's property, is wider than that. Most of the roads that we have here in Woodbury are either 40 feet or 50 foot in right-of-ways. We don't have 50-foot roads. We have perhaps 20 to 27 primarily, in that range. So there is area on the side of each formal roadway edge, which is still village property. In this particular case, there's property on the sides of that road which are still in the ownership of the Pulver property. So all I'm saying to you is that--
We're certain about that, because this isn't a village road, it's a private road.
Correct, but if you look at the map--
What Dennis is saying is that the, you look at the map, and there are dark lines that show the roadway area, that's not necessarily the 20-foot-wide road that exists. This is the problem, this is the design, this is the easement, is that correct? This is the road.
No, there's no easement.
So I guess what we're looking for, currently, the Red Shale Road is 20 feet wide.
Correct.
What we're looking for is the property that Mr. Pulver owns, how wide is it? Other than, you're going to make it 24, I understand that, but how wide is it? 30, 40 feet wide?
It probably varies from 30 and 40 to even 100 down here.
Okay.
It's not consistent.
It's not consistent, all right.
Not even--
Okay, so Sandy, does that answer your question? So--
I believe so, but so, but 24 feet is going to be paved?
Correct, yes.
Okay, is that going to satisfy ESO?
As long, minimum is 16 feet for the fire truck to get through, but as long as we can get two cars passing each other, Dennis--
Sorry.
On a 24-foot-wide road, that's 12 feet wide, and then they have, they'll probably have to have a shoulder. If it narrows down to small to 30 foot--
Okay.
And it's a 24 foot, we probably have to make sure that there's some kind of a edge there in case, because also we have to take into consideration truck deliveries.
Oh, here's a narrow--
Are they going to be using this axis as well? And is that going to be wide enough for a type of truck, whether it be a box truck, van?
Well, that goes back to the narrative--
I doubt any wheel is going to get up there.
But it goes back to the narrative as to exactly what's going to be held there or go on there.
Right, it's just all, we don't know the whole thing.
Right.
But I understand, we're dealing with primarily with--
The road.
With the road and traffic. So we have to take that in consideration, where it bends and, where is the narrower part from Quaker to the property line where the rock is or--
Most of the narrow part was around this post.
All right, and that's the one that you, that he, that Mr. Pulver owns, and he's going to give the easement to the road, which he's going to--
Okay.
Okay.
From the vineyard location, almost to the point where Larry just pointed to, that's a fairly wide right-of-way. It's almost 50 feet for a lot of it. Then where that piece of property that they've, they're giving themselves easement to, that's where it narrows down. It looks like 20 to 25 feet in right-of-way width, and if the road is not dead center in that, the existing road is not dead center in that, it'll meander and it might go on to the other property if they didn't give themselves a variance, or they didn't get a, not a variance, get a, an easement.
Okay. And then, so from the driveway on forward to Castleton, is that open right now?
No.
It doesn't go on to Castleton directly, it goes up into the Mr. Pulver's driveway, if I understand it, or does that change?
This is showing directly onto Castleton.
That's how it is.
It is going directly?
It goes directly from Quaker to Castleton.
And is that open right now?
Well, I have a chain between two drops on Castleton, so you'll get on Ice House from Castleton, and I have a gate before the houses begin on Ice House.
So where, where the proposed driveway is for the winery, the gate is beyond that, or more?
The gate is present, at least, in this area.
Okay, so will that be, that's going to be taken down? Okay. Is there going to be anything blocking from the, than your driveway out to Castleton?
The capital, right, it's--
If you're going to speak, I need you to come up to the microphone, please.
I guess where I'm going with this is, is if this is granted, and I don't know, you know, I'm just, again, basing it on what happens at Paleya, if you have some kind of festival or something there, and people are backed up getting in this way--
or something there and people are backed up getting in this way, are they going to at all be able to go up through Brigadoon and come in the other way?
Personally, I've always thought that was a good idea, but I've been steered away from that by this board, so I'm willing to keep it all coming in and out of Ice House if we prefer, or we can really celebrate.
Well, no, if that's, we need to know the plan to know if, I mean, because if, if there's just going to be one way in and one way out, then I want to make sure that that is.
There would probably more than likely be an emergency access, as the winery has one lower on, as you're going up the hill towards the winery, they have a lower access that's used as an emergency access. I know that's what the police have put into play. If they have a large venues down there, they have a lower road for, that goes past their warehouse.
Maria, I don't recall whether there were any restrictions when Brigadoon was approved, and I don't know if you recall whether there are any restrictions in the resolution, we probably ought to look at that, because there may have been some, some requirements.
That's why I'm saying I don't remember Ice House going straight through to Castleton.
No, I know there was a connection.
There was a property there that was.
There was a connection, but it very possibly could have been an emergency connection and there may be restrictions on it. I think you should, we will try to research the approval for that and see if there are any restrictions.
Yeah, because, I mean, if it's going to be used as an emergency roadway, then we've got to figure out how it's going to be.
The applicant is advised they'll do whatever you want, but I think you, you need to know whether you have any restrictions from prior action.
You're right.
If it's a prior action of this board, you know, you can consider what you want to do with that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, after a public hearing and deliberations on that, so you ought to consider that.
Okay.
So we'll have Dennis review that, because originally that was Rushmore, then to Brigadoon. You'll look into that for us, thank you. I mean, I can probably find it too, but.
And then just the, the width of the driveway is going to be 20 feet?
Which driveway is that?
The driveway, the proposed access into the vineyard?
Right, into the site where the facility is going to be?
Right, off of Ice House.
Yes.
So that's 20 feet, so that's enough for two cars to pass.
Did you say 20 or 24 before?
The driveway is 20.
What about the driveway?
Which driveway is Andy?
The driveway off of Ice House into the vineyard.
So you're going to reduce it from 24 down to 20?
No, no. She's asking about the driveway that goes from Ice House to the.
Wine facility.
Right, this long.
Right, so you're, so you're telling me you're going to go from a 24 to 20?
Oh, yeah.
That's what we're.
Well, you can still pass two cars, but you can't, there's an issue about parking on the side there. If, if there was an overflow event, if you don't have, and I think we suggested this, maybe you want to take a look and have overflow grass parking or something like that, but if people started parking out on that travel way in, you might have a problem getting an emergency service vehicle in through there if they're parking, especially if, I mean, if they park on both sides, nothing's going to happen. So I think it would have to be completely restricted from parking. John, agree? And then if you want to provide overflow parking, because we don't want to pave the world, and if you don't need that for your typical events, we, the board has considered, you know, if you have grass paving, as long as it can support vehicles and it's, we've also had like little rustic areas, well, you put some stone down, a little bit of stone, let even grass grow up through the stone, just so it's stable and people can park there.
And the driveway is not going to be paved?
No.
And it's going right through the, right through the vineyard? Where you're going to grow the grapes, it's going to go right through there?
Right through.
Okay, I'm not sure that I'm, that I like that.
It's the appearance? It's the appearance you're trying to achieve driving through there?
Yeah.
Yep.
Sandy, the winery that's north of them, they're not paved?
No, no, the paving isn't getting me so much as, as, again, depending on the narrative and what's going on up there, if it's, if it's something that, you know, everybody wants to go to, and you've got the roadway with the, you know, I know, I know people that have vineyards, and it takes a long time for, for those, you know, to be cultivated and, and produce the grapes. And if you've got people, you know, parking here or parking there, has too much to drink, and you've got that, I'm just curious why you're not going up maybe one side rather than through it, but that's, that's just.
I figured we actually carry the traffic more for the neighbors.
The what?
I, the, the traffic more for the neighbors and neighbors to, to build with that field when we're on here.
No, I was thinking around the other side.
But if, their, their plan is to put the traffic in between the vineyards, so to soften the impact to the neighbors, is what you're just saying?
Right, but if it was on the other side, it would be softened even more.
The only question, it really goes back to the narrative, they're going to operate this facility 20, I mean, 12 months?
Mm-hmm.
Then we have to understand that the roadway is stable for those, because springtime, summer is one operation, winter month is a different operation.
Right.
So we have to make sure that there is a travel, especially for emergency vehicles to get in there.
Right.
So we have to look at that and look at the emergency services to make sure that they're comfortable with the roadbed.
Right.
And then from the paved portion to go on the gravel, whatever you're going to gravel on up, what's the incline percentage? Is, is there, I'm just curious as.
It's going to have to be somewhat gradual. It's going to be a slow.
All right, because Dennis, our.
Sorry.
Driveway.
Getting educated.
That's okay, driveway. I know 15% in?
15% slope.
Slope, what's the slope?
Well, we do have roads that go higher, okay, but we try not to go 15%. We have some hilly areas, we have done that, those are paved areas.
In WP3, okay, Woodbury Villas now, I think we probably have roads that go up to 14 or 15%. And, well, that, in a normal driveway situation, we have gone steeper, but that's a single house, that's a single, not, not something like this that's supporting a number of people. We would try to keep it a little lower than that. I didn't, I looked at the grades, grades that severe?
No, I take day off, but we would take it some more information.
Okay. I took a look because the county gave you some comments on that and talked about the severe slopes. I don't have a survey in the area, but I looked on Google Earth, Google Maps, and I have one that gives elevations. I looked at the elevations, particularly in the back there, because I was looking to see just to the east of the existing parking lot, whether that, that open area or that area they have there would be suitable for overflow parking. And it looked to me like the grades didn't change that dramatically. Certainly you'll have to, Larry, you'll have to get some, some topo information, and that'll be reserved for when we look at that.
Okay, perfect. Anything else, Sandy?
Uh, no, not right now.
Chris, Robert. So board members, anyone else have any thoughts, concerns or comments?
Kid Robert?
Yeah, he asked about the events year round. All right, so.
Yep.
To go with a negative declaration at this point? We can change that.
Well, you.
To send it back to the ZVA, we have to have identified concerned areas. One is the paved and unpaved road, 24 to 20, that's a concern of ours, correct?
Yes.
Okay. How, how are we sending this back to the ZVA so they can move forward?
Well, it, it may not be ready to go back.
I don't think it is.
At this point in time, we can't.
So I think that there's been a request for more information, a better narrative, so that you can understand the impacts. And I think once that comes back, we'll be commenting on that, which will help the board, you can discuss the traffic more, and then give a feeling that you think that it's okay, or that it's okay if they make these certain improvements, et cetera, and that's sort of how you feel with respect to the application. If you feel it mitigated what it is, ultimately you could be in that, but not right away, because there are other issues that still have to be addressed. But you, at least with respect to traffic, never going to be bound by it, and the applicant doesn't, isn't trying to bind you by anything, but they're trying to get your comments with respect to traffic and see whether or not there are any significant issues that they won't have addressed before you, after they have clarified things, so that you are giving basically what you think it's going to be like with respect to the traffic and what they will do to mitigate the impacts. And they can take that to the ZVA, and the ZVA can, if they think that's going to satisfy them, they can either decide to grant or not grant to the variance that's being asked with respect to the access to this road. So I, I mean, I wouldn't, I would recommend not making any determinations in that business at this time.
Okay.
All right, so you have enough information from the board and consultants to do some review and give back to us what a narrative of the type of events, hours of operation?
Yeah.
Perfect. All right, so we're good for tonight? All right, gentlemen, have a good night. All right. Next item on the agenda is Woodbury Common, discuss proposed Phase 5 center renovations to include two hotels with related spa and restaurant facilities, expansion of the existing parking garage, the development of a second parking garage, additional infill detail and related improvements. The property is located within the common, Woodbury Common outlet center off of Route 32 and is known on the Wood Village of Woodbury tax notice, section 226 block 1, block 1, and section 225 block 1, lot 7.20.72. Just give me one more second. All right. As I have spoken with my attorney on many occasions with the application before us, since I've been duly noted over the years, since I've, I work at Nike, which is a business within Woodbury Common, and it's not, I am not employed by Simon Properties in any way, shape or form, or to not receive any financial backing from them. I've been sitting on this board since they did the expansion in 2014, and we did 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 5 different projects before this board while I've been an employee of Nike, so just letting that know for the record, and at this time, I feel there's no need to recuse myself. On, I have a chart here, my own benefit. Dennis, I, in my notes, in my old files, from 1997, March 5th, I found final secret findings. Where'd Dennis go? Hi, Dennis. I don't know if that has any impact on the board members here, but on February 28th, 2013, there was a developer's agreement signed between the village and Simon Properties. There's been a couple articles in the newspapers.
What, what date was that, that it was signed, Mary?
The developer's agreement?
Yeah.
February 28th, 2013. That's between the village and Simon, that had to do with the lighting sequences being put on Route 32, that was for the expansion. Just for the record, on myself and my consultants, back in September 2016, we had a pre-app on the conceptual plan. Also, we had a pre-app meeting on October 3rd, 2018 for the proposed expansion, and so we are here tonight for this proposed application. I just want to state for the record, I'm sure the applicant will, will confirm all this while as we move on with the project, Woodbury Common has been at full tax assessment. The only thing that they requested was with the, when they did the expansion, was the exemption on sales tax only. They pay full property, which includes county orange, county of orange, town, village, and school taxes. They're a full assessment, I want that to be clearly noted.
There's, except it was a sales tax?
Sales tax exemption only on the building materials, that was for the expansion, and that was approved, that, we don't approve that, that is with New York State, and they...
That's what I was going to say, we didn't.
We didn't approve, that's the only exemption they ever received. Woodbury Common has not been before us to, well, let me jump, let me jump here. Also, if and when a hotel or two, one or two hotels are proposed, the town of Woodbury gets what's called an additional room tax. That goes directly to the town of Woodbury. Any other portions of sales taxes that would be generated go to the state, which come back to the county, and they're paid on full property taxes. As we're going to review, they're going to show us where the hotels are being proposed, and I'm going to, I'll leave this question out, I presume the cemetery is not going to be touched in any way, shape or form, because you're not going to be building anywhere near it, and if such, we will probably keep the same kind of conditions as we did O and R earlier. And as far as I know, there is no, because I'm just going over some things that people have been talking about, and I just want to make sure the applicant confirms all this. Metro North, if and one day we ever want to have put a train depot at Woodbury Common, it's their application, not Woodbury Commons, because they have to go through their property. As I was saying before, the total taxes that they pay in county, town and village and school, as of September of 2018 of this year, they pay over $15 million in taxes, that's from myself doing some research, and I have copies of those if people want them. And if you can confirm later on in your presentation, I don't think there's a plan to put an amusement park down there, correct? I think, just answer that later, thank you. I've had comments from all over the, from people here. Just bear with me, I know I had something else. And then I'm going to leave it to you as we move on in the future about any abatements. I know Woodbury is not allowed on property taxes, and I know the Monover School District doesn't do abatement, tax abatements. So those are just some questions that have been asked, and I'll let you go at it, because it's your turn. If anyone wants it, I have copies of the tax breakdowns for all the properties in own. Good to go.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Is that microphone on? You can take it out and.
Underneath.
Under the box, I'll, I'll put where the number is, somewhere in the end there, there's a little button.
Can't see it.
There you go, green light, go.
Good evening, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Jennifer Kanerek from Price Me Schulman and D.R. Minio, on behalf of the applicant Premium Outlet Partners. It's good to be back before the board this evening, and we thank you for the opportunity to discuss the.
You want to borrow?
Do I have to lean?
Let's keep talking.
Just keep talking. Yeah, you'll be good.
We're excited this evening to discuss the, what is called Phase 5. I have with me this evening John Villapiano, who's Vice President of Development for Woodbury Commons. Without going into too much detail, I'm going to let him take over, so he can get right into the, the project itself.
You can walk around with it.
Walk all over.
If it's not working, we'll get you one more.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, consultants, residents, always good to be back in front of the board, especially with this new proposal, and kick off the environmental review process for what will be the next addition to our world-class property. What we're proposing at this point is a net increase of retail space to the tune of 185,000 square feet. This includes inline retail, outlot retail, restaurant uses, spa uses, and tenant storage. We expect these uses to complement the already exciting offerings at our property and provide customers with needed amenities, and that will help this project advance the retail experience to the next level. To support these improvements, and as we did with the last renovation project, we're proposing two new parking structures. One would be a standalone five-story parking deck, and a second would be an expansion of the existing four-level parking deck in the rear of our property. The site layout, as currently proposed, ties into the exit 131 improvements that the New York State DOT is currently under construction and expected to complete later next year. So with that being said, other specifics for this project, we will be looking to implement green technology in terms of solar panels that would be installed at the top levels of our parking decks. This would provide energy that can be put back onto the grid, consumed on-site. It'd also provide an added benefit to our customers and employees by shading in a top level of a parking deck that is right now very exposed to the sun. Second element of the project would be the construction and implementation of a helipad on the property. This is something that would be new to our Premium Outlets portfolio. And again, the customer amenities.
Take another one. Take another one. That one might be dead. Take this one over here. That's okay, cool. We'll figure it out, you can
Okay. So that last aspect, the helipad, would be new to the Premium Outlets portfolio. Closer, a lot of our customers do come from the greater New York area, of which helicopter travel is a very common mode of transportation. We have received several inquiries from both customers and private helicopter operators about bringing customers up to experience not only our property, but also the benefits of the greater Orange County area. So with that being said, Madam Chair, I was not writing down all of the questions, so we are prepared, if there's any specific things you would like us to answer or address, do so to the best of our ability, recognizing that we are still in the very early stages of this project, and really only looking at our full environmental assessment form tonight.
Well, some of my questions were from residents and from outpouring of concern, and I don't but I know you're not planning an amusement park, correct, down in this facility?
No, no. We have a
Put that to rest.
Yes, we have 149 acres that will continue to operate predominantly as a outlet retail center.
And, big question I'm gonna add, the tax abatements. If anything, you'll, later on, you'll probably do the same thing as you did with the last expansion with the sales tax on building materials only?
Yeah, there's, through the Orange County IDA is the agency that we worked with, they do provide multiple opportunities to
It's you. Jeff, what's going on here? You go ahead, go ahead.
They do provide opportunities to spur investment and business development within Orange County. They do provide a couple means to do so without, without committing to anything at this point. I would expect that, you know, on any aspect of this future project, that we would, again, utilize a sales tax exemption on materials purchased for the construction. And any, we may explore other opportunities to work with the IDA in efforts to support this project.
Okay. Board members, you have any thoughts, concerns, questions? We'll start with Rich at the other end, because right now, we're doing a fact gathering. We're not making, there's no final decisions being made. This is all a concept plan that the applicant is looking to hear from the planning board and the consultants as well. Rich, thoughts, concerns, or questions at this time?
Okay, so we're not talking about traffic tonight, is that correct?
If you have something that you want to say, I'm sure John will respond to us when I get to him.
Okay.
Be able to, John, at this side.
All right, again, it's, you know, the word "traffic" has come up several times tonight.
Yep.
And I'm sure it comes up every meeting. And again, one of the primary concerns I have is, you know, we already have several, what I call work in progress, pending applications, you know, where we've done or provided traffic studies. Plus, well, I'm primarily concerned about adjacent to 32 or on 32. When we review this type of application here, in the past, we've only looked at traffic studies as it pertains to the application, and if I can use the word, you know, we look at it from a silo point of view, just that application. At any point going forward, with everything happening from a Harman Transit, the Central Valley Retail, Senior Citizen, the winery, I mean, it goes on and on and on, is there any point where we're gonna look to our traffic consultant to look at the aggregate total versus the silo look?
Rich, where the
This board has never done so-called silo approach. Every time that they have done traffic analysis certainly with respect to Woodbury Common's
Yeah.
We have identified, this board has identified for them as to the existing conditions, up and down Route 32 and elsewhere, that they have to study, as well as potential pending applications that may be before this board that would increase the traffic as well. They've always had to study that. It's always been a cumulative impact study with respect to traffic in the area. It's never been just their traffic.
Okay, then, maybe it's me, because when I read the traffic study, when they say cumulative, maybe I didn't see in the study that we've already included this, this application, or these pending applications by name. It always says cumulative, but I don't know what that means. The applications pending and work in progress?
And, and they are.
They are? Okay, I must have missed that.
That's why we always put those intersections, because it expands beyond, when we ask a project to go beyond north and south.
Exactly.
Yeah, if we include everything that's currently there, what's existing, what's proposed, and John, if you want to take on further.
Okay. Every traffic study you do has to have a component that tells you what
What's going on with the microphones? Do you have new batteries? Thank you. Everyone speak loudly.
We want to make sure that whatever's in the pipeline
Yeah.
is included in that study. Then, on either existing traffic, anticipated traffic due to projects that are in front of the board or approved by the board but yet not yet built, projects that are half-built and not fully occupied, we have to put that in. We have, judgment is made at the time, is the project so small that it's miniscule, we take care of that with a growth rate. So we do take cumulative impact. What I like about this particular project, it's unique, is the helipad, and the fact that they are talking to an operator, and what I want to make sure is that the type of service that we're dealing with this helipad, is it going to be a commercial service? The board will want to know that because there are any number of other entities, including some amusement properties that are occurring in the 17 corridor, that I don't want this to become a transit hub for, unless the board is fully aware of the type of transit hub it could be. So I'm concerned about that. That's part of my question, what the anticipated use of that helipad is, what the time of service is, is it for a convenience type of system? Is it for an emergency type of system, which is very important, especially in, with the number of people that come to Woodbury? Can we bring a medical helicopter in to evacuate somebody? But is it gonna be used for commercial? And John, you mentioned that, that you're talking about commercial operators, and I want to make sure that it'll become a shuttle service.
Can I add?
Without the knowledge of the board.
Also concerned with the school right across the street from there, and the noise factor. I don't know how noisy it's gonna be, and how frequent it's gonna be.
And the route.
I was gonna ask that, the flight paths, because they are dictated in New York, be provided, because it could take it over highly, I mean, I have a concern with the helipad over such a large shopping facility in the event there is an accident. There, you have the potential for high-impact event. Now, add those flight paths, which I'm pretty sure, based on New York, go, our area, go over residential areas. You know, living in the area, you're dealing with the military academy during the day, during the spring. I don't know if you ever had a Huey hover over your house for a couple hours, but it's quite loud. So having these helicopters for these dignitaries and stuff come in, going over residential neighborhoods, would be a substantial impact, I think, to the residents of Woodbury.
Just so the board is aware, in the past, helicopters have come up from New York City, and they have used a different location, not many, maybe a handful in the last year or two. The police department has been made aware of it. They know when the helicopter's coming in, and they've landed off-site, and they've had the people transported from where they've landed to Simon's property. So it's, this is not a brand-new thing, and I've been made aware of this, and I, this has been an ongoing talk for the last two to three years about having a helipad down there, and there was, different locations have been looked at. It is a new service. There is nothing within Orange County that regulates yes or no about helicopter flights coming and going out of Orange County, because I know there's, was it Glenmere? I know there's frequent helicopter flights that go into there. I have no idea what's gonna happen with Legoland, but I'm sure we can probably get information if Legoland's gonna be bringing in people by helicopter. So yes, it is a new entity, and we do need to expand on that and review it through John and his office, and through your traffic consultant as well. So that's duly noted about the helicopter and noise levels and whatnot. And I know that the helipad, if it is proposed, which, where's the site that you are thinking about? Is that more towards the rear of the property, where along 30, the thruway, not up near the school, so it's lower? Do you know where you're proposing the helipad?
The way it's currently on our plan is it would be located on top of this parking deck, so yes.
It's down, it's down in the pit, all the way down?
Adjacent to the thruway.
Okay, just so we have a general idea.
And the offering.
Okay.
Is that, you know, there's one thing where in the past, some helicopters every once in a while would come in. What is being asked here is actually for the planning board to approve the use of a helicopter service of some type or other, which you'll have to define. But the board will have to know, and I don't have to know, under what authority that you are proceeding under, whether it's under a particular use within, that's permitted in the code, whether or not you're saying it's an accessory use, whether or not you're gonna be asking for a variance. So I think that needs to be all fleshed out in subsequent appearances.
And just in addition to the helipad, if and when, if it was ever approved, would it be used for the fire department as a landing zone for a helicopter if need be? That would be a, would fire then be able to use that as a landing zone with the ambulance?
You would, Simon would take no issue to emergency services personnel making use of this. Absolutely.
Where did I leave off? Rich, I was going back to you.
Yeah, I just have one other. You mentioned Metro North, and I'm not privy, maybe I missed something, but is there an application before us? Is it an idea, a concept, or you just threw that out there?
I threw that out there because, Mario, jeez, Andrew Cuomo, brazenly, I think it was in March, stated that Metro North was gonna have an access point to the rear parking deck of Woodbury Common. And unbeknownst to Woodbury Common and Simon, they've never really, they didn't know that this was gonna be a done deal. It's been talked about, but
Okay.
It's, there's no application before us.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Chris?
The solar panels would be on top of the five-story structure, so that would technically make it a six-story part, structure. The proposed solar panels for the Green Initiative, your narrative stated it would be on top of the parking structure.
I, the Tamara agreed to have the option to do it on any parking structure. Whether or not it qualifies as a story, I, maybe it's a code
Well, it's not
Solar panels of this nature would generally extend about 20 feet above the level of
Right, well, I'm just trying to get that out there, because you're saying in a five-story parking structure, and then potentially put solar panels, which is gonna add an additional 20 feet on top of the five stories.
But it's not a solid
I don't think, I don't think it would qualify, we'll take a look, but I don't think it would qualify as a story, however, it would have a height, so height would be an issue, and then you'd have ARB. So there's ARB, and there's, and there's a height issue, but I don't know that it would qualify as a story and change that, and I don't know, we'd have to talk, take a look at the code, and then maybe talk to Gary.
In our application, we project the height of some structures in this proposal to be at 70. Which does include the solar panel. That's 70, 70.
And is there any provision with the new parking structures to make dedicated employee parking?
That would be an operational, an operational question at this time. We haven't looked into that.
Anything else, Chris?
No.
Sandy?
Just a couple of things. Again, going back to the helipad, you had said that it would facilitate people coming here as well as other places in Orange County. Yeah, that's all you need. With that assumption, are you then going to have to have some kind of car rental agency or transportation area if they wanted to leave Woodbury Common and then come back to the helipad?
At this point, we're not anticipating a rental agency being on our property. They could probably call any number of car services that would pick them up and drive them.
But then, I mean, are you gonna have to have a designated area? I don't know how, how well-used you expect this helipad to be? Is there any, do you have any statistics on that, or ideas about that?
At this point, no, we don't have any
I would, I would think that if, if we went forward with all this, that if they were gonna be picked up by a car service, that they would have to go to where the bus, there's two bus stations down there, and that would probably have to be noted somewhere. If, if they want a car service, they would have to pick up their car over where the bus set, but that's something to decide. That's something down the road to think about, but that would be the only place that I would think of, that we could possibly put a car pickup right now. We can always look at something else.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to see, depending on how frequently it's used, you know, limos or whatever, starting to be parked all over the place.
Just so that you're, most people, I don't know if you're aware, but some of the rides that come out of the city, it's $300 per person one-way to ride the helicopter.
Yeah.
So we're talking about people who
Affluent.
You and I are not gonna be taking a helicopter ride back and forth to the city and coming up here. They'll leave me somewhere.
Okay, and then, after the parking decks and the reduction in some parking, addition in others, so you're saying that the net increase in parking spaces is going to be, what, is that 1573 or 1673?
That may be just for one of the parking structures.
Oh, that's parking, okay, I'm sorry.
Across the site, it's 2,000, one other
It is the 2,000. It is the 2,000, okay.
Now, with that being said, they're going to be reducing parking with the little shaded areas because they're going to do stores facing each other.
Right.
I forgot what the name of that section is. What's the name of that section?
Niagara.
Niagara, thank you. So Niagara is going to lose parking spaces there. And they'll be gained over into the parking decks, if I'm understanding that correctly.
But what I'm getting at is if you, if you are anticipating needing 2015 additional spaces, so that's 2015 additional cars, you're anticipating coming into Woodbury to go to Woodbury Common on any given Sunday, holiday?
To meet code, that, that's accurate, yes.
Okay, because, I mean, that's a lot of traffic. And that's my biggest contention with this, this whole expansion is I don't know how much more Woodbury can take at this point. That's all.
Okay. Robert?
With the additional, you know, entrances or cars going in and cars going out, is there going to be a change in exits and entrances? I mean, pretty much there's one entrance and one exit. Years ago, there used to be two, two ways of out, going out, two ways of getting in. Is there going to be a change with that, especially with the, you know, the Route 32 work that's being done there?
Who wants to take that on? With the Exit 131 interchange, you're still going to have the main entrance, which is opposite, off of 32, you have the main entrance opposite the elementary school. You're going to have that entrance there. That's going to be a two-way traffic, well, is it coming in that way too?
No, yeah, we'll have two dedicated right turn lanes coming in 32 northbound, two dedicated left turn lanes coming in southbound. And I believe there's four full lanes coming out, three left turns and a dedicated right. We'll also have a dedicated right in, which we have today. There will also be an entrance that connects to our ring road back behind Niagara. That essentially is being called an extension and integer road that will go under 32. What this will do with our, the idea of this in the, in the DOT's traffic, traffic study and their traffic plan is it would allow our customers a direct exit and through a few right turn movements, utilizing divergent diamond interchange, they'll be able to get right onto the thruway exit without making a left-hand turn. So the comparatively to what we have today, what the DOT's traffic study has indicated to us is that we will have the exact amount of ingress egress once the project is completed as we do today. Though in very different locations.
The, the issue with the DDI and the operation is the traffic here is going to be twofold. First of all, what happens on the 32 and the impact on the public. But I think because of the additional 2,000-plus spaces and the addition, the limited number of access points you have, we're going to have to start looking at internal systems to make sure that the emergency services during the peak times can access the site. So we want to have some idea as to what the queuing is for external, for, for me, for the, on the, on the external roadways as well as what the queuing would be for inbound and outbound traffic. And that's a growing concern, especially as we keep on adding. I have no difficulty adding, it's just a matter, we want to make sure that it works, okay?
I'm sure as we move forward, you'll be looking more at traffic with their consultant as well, but are you finished?
Yes, I'm finished.
I know traffic is the big heavy word of the day right now, but with this Exit 131 project that should be done by next November 2019, it's supposed to help with the traffic along 32 and to mitigate the traffic from Woodbury Common and other, all, all other areas within Orange County. This is not being, this Exit 131 was not built just solely for Woodbury Common, it's building for the way Orange County is growing. And that mitigation with going under 32, because it's going to be where that side deck is right now and it's going to be a roundabout to exit to go under 32. It's going to be, it's a life change for all of us next year when this Exit 131 is done, so it's, it's interesting. So we're going to be, where this goes back to where Rich asked about the traffic impacts with, we're looking at from north and south and also on Route 32, correct me if I'm wrong, with the new Exit 131, there's going to be smart lights, which is supposed to help with the traffic as well. So the New York State DOT is implementing those and it should help us with the traffic all along 32. What else is the Exit 131 giving us on 32?
We have to go through the entire sequence and find that, and also we have to start looking at, there are other projects. Significant amount of traffic through that interchange.
Yes. Right. I, I understand because I know you're working on other traffic projects for us as well, which is the gardens, I know the shops at Woodbury is going to be included in our traffic studies, so they're all, we have several traffic, and John is aware of all of them, so he's pulling information from all the applications that are before us. I'm seeing Rick look at me, yes, Rick?
I mean, I think we have a general idea of what we're projecting.
Yep.
Your consultants will weigh in as to what there need to be in that scope. John can identify all of the things that he wants studied. And then when the board is happy with that scope, then they'll go off and study it and come back and then we can proceed along that basis.
Was this at all? Propo, or thought when the Route, or the 131 was considered, was being considered? Was this at all?
Way back when, that's why the, the side roundabout is going to be past the deck. This was all supposed to be, this, as I mentioned earlier, this project was first proposed to us in 2016.
This project, that project?
It was a concept plan. I, as I stated earlier, we had a, I had a meeting in September 2016 on a conceptual plan, which I've known about and so has the mayor, and we've, Woodbury Common was supposed to work on it and in conjunction with the Exit 131 project. They didn't know what the final project was going to be, so everything was pushed back. So yes, they are, correct me if I'm wrong, you've been working with the Exit 131 for this project and now you're going forward, now you've seen what they're proposed and what they're doing.
So they took into consideration approximately 2,000 more cars?
Not, not Exit 131.
No, that's what I'm talking about.
Woodbury Common, they've been working on this, they've been looking at the whole system.
I, I cannot speak to the DOT's performance, performance of the route network.
No, all I'm asking is if, if, if the construction on 32 was supposed to alleviate some of what happens at the Commons, if, if now the construction, the inverted diamond or whatever it's called now. The DDI?
DDI.
DBI?
DDI.
DDI, okay, if the DDI was supposed to alleviate what's happening now, but not taking, taking into consideration what you want to do, it's like it's a wash, it's, it's not going to.
When the state did their, for the state interchange design, the state's interchange design takes into account area-wide development, not just Woodbury Common, area-wide development. And it's usually a 20 to 30-year projection out. What we want to make sure is, the fact is that based upon counts that will be conducted as part of the study, that we haven't gotten to a point that we're already exceeding that design standard. So we know what the design standard is, we know what the, what the capacity of the roadway are, roadway are, we know what the input from other developments that are coming in, into the project. And then we know what the impact of this particular development or volume of, of traffic would be put on the road. And then we have to look at whether or not it can handle it. Then we also have to look at, do, because of all these projects, do we just use up all the capacity that was built for 30 years in three years?
I, I, yeah. I was going to, I want to answer the question a little differently. You have a lot of work to do, but when you guys were planning this, did you load this on to 131 as planned to see if it was going to work from, from your perspective?
Are you asking if we, Simon has performed any traffic studies at this point?
Yes, that's sort of, that's sort of what I'm asking.
He answers no.
As stated, this is a conceptual plan where, as we're getting all our, our comments from the board and consultants, and I'm going to ask.
Typical in the way that every applicant, yeah, something puts in with a plan, whether it be Simon or Shops at Woodbury or Legoland or anything else, is that they come in with a plan and then they have to do studies to determine whether that plan is going to be acceptable or maybe they have to cut it or maybe the plan is fine, but nobody knows, including an applicant, until they do all those studies. And those studies, it's not just their studies, but it's the studies as reviewed by the New York consultants with respect to whether or not those studies are appropriate. So it's, it's not unusual that that's how the project works.
Maria?
So what, I was going to say, go ahead.
As long as we're talking about conceptual things and, and for study matters for them, they have changed the center a little, over the years. And if you look in the center, around the periphery of the center, this area here is protected, this is all interior area that's for pedestrians only. And on the exterior of that, they have the parking, except for the section in Niagara. And in Niagara here now, they're changing it and they're putting a new row of stores so that they can make this boulevard in here for pedestrians. But there still are conflicts with pedestrians and cars in this area here and down here. And it's for a very limited area of parking. We've talked about this and I've asked them to consider whether this area of parking here should be moved in favor of something else. They might, might be looking at putting some shopping in there, but whatever it might be, whatever it might be, and they could put a plaza in here and a nice little grass area and make a little park in the center here. Because, well, because this area is getting pretty exhausted in terms of the amount of impervious area and everything else. So anyway, they should, my, my thought is that they take a look in that area in there and determine whether there's any way they can avoid the pedestrian vehicular conflict. Most malls that you go to, people park on the outside, you go into the mall and it's, you feel like you're a protected environment as a pedestrian. When you go to this mall, that's the only area right now that I see where when you cross, you have to watch all the incoming traffic, all the exiting traffic, and you're in a shopping mode, the pedestrians there, not always keen, interested, looking at the cars and the cars are coming in, they're trying to find a parking spot, sometimes frustrated with the traffic. So anyway, that's something we've talked about and I'd, I'd hope that that be considered.
We've talked about that. I mean, they have to, they have to go through all this and with all the suggestions and comments that we've been giving them over the last two years, this is what they've come up with. And one of the other suggestions I had Dennis with, when we talked about the back area, Chris mentioned employee parking. There was something I, I had mentioned also that, that become dedicated employee parking, so it's a limited type of moving around. So that, that was something because then, that the Niagara end of the parking, of the shopping area, you can give it to employees so that they don't have to walk all the way to the parking decks. So that was something to be brought up. But to get back to scoping document as Rick has stated, we have to give Simon a direction to go into. And I know they heard quite loudly about traffic. The helipad, we'd have to get some kind of a narrative and something on that, more information. The economics, as I mentioned earlier, in the past, you've done scoping documents with economics and everything. I needed to be clear in there what your, the property taxes are, your school taxes are, your generated New York State sales tax that goes up to the state, comes back to the county and gets divided up amongst us. I need to know that. I, I need people to understand what you bring to, what you bring to Orange County and Woodbury and how we, how it gets spread out. Emergency services. I know Woodbury Common currently works very well with the police department and how they work interior-wise. I know we're going to have to look at that, being with the expansion with possible hotels and additional parking decks. I know the one parking deck, when it was built, we did have the fire department's input on it. I know at the time, the fire marshal at the time, we had certain restrictions, every 50 feet, you had to have a standpipe within the fire, in the fire, in the deck. And so these are some things that we have to go through. I mean, I know ambulance-wise, we work with the ambulance, so we always make sure the elevators are correct for the, how the ambulance can bring the stretcher straight in, and I know there's generators. So these are things that I've known from the past that we have to bring forward again with ESUs. So traffic ESUs, economics, what other, what other things do we need for scoping? You guys can do it. I mean, I was going to say, you guys can go and prepare one.
The process that you have. Is that, you know, I don't recall that you submitted a full EAF with this yet, have you?
Yes.
I just can't recall, okay. Okay, so the, the next step is for the board to take the initial seeker steps of typing the action and indicating notice of intent to be lead agency. And once you're able to assume lead agency, then the applicant can go, can go ahead and submit a draft scope. You then have 60 days to go ahead and turn it into a final scope. So they would be the ones to go ahead and say, these are all the things based upon our plan that we expect that you will want studied. And your applicants and the board members will have an opportunity to say, that's fine, or no, you don't need to study that, or you need to study all these other things in addition to what you're saying and you need more detail on these other things, and will come up, as you've done in the past, with a final scope. And then they go off and study all those things. Just a note on the economics of it, and we've been through this before, but not all the planning board members have been here when we did this, is that under SIG, although there is a requirement to have some economic information within the study, is that no application can be denied on the basis that it, it's not economically viable or it's not good economics for the village, right? That's not permissible. The only aspect that you're allowed to study in connection with the economics of it, the economy of a particular application, is actually the positive aspects that they can put forward in an environmental impact statement with a request that if it's such a good economic application, that it could offset some of the adverse environmental impacts. You're not required to, to balance them like that, but you're allowed to. But you're not allowed to say for any application, well, this is going to cost the village too much money for one reason or another. It's not like a positive economic engine. I'm not saying that's, that's what it is for Woodbury Common, but I'm saying generally. And therefore, we're going to say that we're not going to approve it because it's an adverse impact. The economics cannot be, economics alone cannot be this adverse impact. That's not, the courts have said that that's not an environmental impact, the economics, even though it's required to be in an environmental impact study. Required to be in that study. But it, but you should have that in there? As there are any other things that are required under SIG?
Any other things that are required under SIG to be put in there? You've been through this before with DEISs and scopes for them. So I think the board can, doesn't have to start now, can wait till its next meeting if it wants to, but it can go ahead and take the initial steps for SIGR in order to move the project forward. This, as the board knows, this is not the first time that Woodbury Common has come here to present an application of some significance. There are prior scopes that were analyzed. The whole world hasn't changed there, although it's been developed somewhat. So some of the, some of the things that you thought were of concern to the board, things that you would have wanted studied, that would serve as the good base for moving forward. There are differences here. The helicopter pad is a difference. The two Art Barrages would be a difference, except for Patagonia Barrage, one of the previous studies. So I think there's a good foundation there for something coming to you that's already been vetted somewhat by the board in a previous...
So is this... Is this considered an amended SIGR, or this is a whole, brand-new SIGR for this?
Discussing. It's a new application.
Yeah, I, there is, you know, I think, you know, you don't want to get too much where you're talking about how many angels can dance on the head of a pin. Whether or not it's done under the rubric of an amended or supplemental environmental impact statement or its own standalone, from a point of view, if you're taking a hard look, doesn't really matter. It's more procedural. I think that it would make it clearer personally if, and I think it's more appropriate, if this be a standalone SIGR, that it's not simply based upon the other SIGR studies and trying to tweak those. Whatever information they want to take from those prior ones, and they want to incorporate to this new study, they can do that. But I would recommend to the board that this be considered just like a new application. It's a big improvement, it has its own impacts. And obviously, in studying those impacts, they have to study all of the present existing structure on their own site, as well as what exists outside of their site. So they, they'll have to study that. But I suggest to you that it should be as a new project, new SIGR itself.
I think it's the cleanest way...
And the applicant, yeah, applicant agrees with that, that's the cleanest. All right, with all that being said, I'm going to offer a motion that we declare ourselves intend to be lead agency and that we have Rick...
Type the action as a type one.
As a type one, you want me to do that first? All right, so I'll make a motion.
Do it all in one motion.
Okay, so I'm going to, motion is to, are intend to be lead agency and to make this a type-one action and to have Rick's office prepare the paperwork. Do I have a second?
I'll make, oh, you're making the motion, I'll second.
All right, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Anything else that the applicant wants from us? Go ahead. That's okay.
Comment that was included in Mr. Lindsay's review of a prior site plan amendment about the, I'll read, this is from a letter dated July 24, 2018 to Chairman Maria Hunter. On page two, it says, although customary incidental storage related to a specific retail space is permitted within that space, the board has not considered nor approved any spaces designated solely as storage. Solely for storage, excuse me. So question not for consideration here at this meeting, but we do anticipate further site plan amendments, as we've seen over the last couple of months. On one of those weekends, we do anticipate putting this question in front of the board. As we've seen in this application, there is a desire amongst our tenant community to have additional storage space for their merchandise that is not within their, their sales floor. So we are implementing that as part of this future project into parking decks, specifically under ramps. We've done that successfully at other projects of ours, it's unused space, ideal for that. Specifically to what we have out there today is unused interior space that at one point did carry a certificate of occupancy. Maybe it's in a transition to another tenant, maybe it's just not a very desirable space right now, and we're looking to do something with it as part of a future, a future initiative. What we would be asking the board to consider is to allow a certificate of occupancy for that space to be utilized as tenant's storage for our onsite tenants.
And that space was, each other's space would be referred to as part of the approved July, that was...
Yes.
All right, I'm going to ask you to pair a memo to Dennis and to Rick. Let them look at it, see how we're going to proceed with that, so that we, because we did approve temporary storage for you when, before you tore down the buildings there, right?
Correct, that was one of the, within the last, I don't know, the last year.
All right, so I'm going to, Rick and Dennis, I'll have them submit something to the two.
Is this for present storage of the constructed buildings you're talking for the future of this project?
No, this is present storage, yeah.
And is this for existing tenants or potential tenants or lease? That's what we need to know.
Space, the space would be leased to tenants on our site.
On-site only?
So whether or not they're there now...
Or in the future?
It could be contingent on part of a future deal, you know, so that, so, yeah. Exactly, no, we would not, yeah, this would not be, this would not become store, self-store.
I think what you need to do is do what Maria's asked and flesh out in detail exactly what you want, technically where you want this to occur, square footage is involved, purpose involved, the respective users. And then we'll look at that and also speak with Gary and see whether or not that's something that is permissible both from a code point of view as well as from whether or not it's permissible from prior approvals of the board or whether or not that would be part of the area. Thank you. One of the operational aspects, too, was some of your storage areas, like Ray was used down the street. There were a constant movement and out, because the stores had limited storage areas, and they were selling high volumes of movement and out. You have a storage area where it's going to be deliveries, it's going to be moving out. That would be different than somebody who stores something there long-term and then you don't get it.
And then you, they can correspond with the two of you directly, consultants, and then flesh it out then, if it went?
What happens, they'll either be, I was likely, they'll have to come back to the board to ask the board if it's amended to the prior site plan for purposes of allowing buildings to improve in that site plan.
So that the amendment to the prior approval doesn't have to be attached to this new application that you, okay.
Yeah, that would be, that would be constructed, that we're talking about existing though.
Time for time. Eddie, you're all good? Board members, consultants are good? With all that being said, I'm going to ask for a motion to...
What about the meeting?
Oh, the meeting, December 19th. I would like to cancel that meeting, because I know it's right before the holidays. Board members, Rich? The 19th, are you available for that meeting? I would like to cancel it. If I make a motion to cancel the December 19th meeting, do I have a second?
I second it.
All in favor of canceling this December 19th meeting? Aye.
Aye.
No meeting on December 19th, okay? You got it. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Everyone, thank you so much for coming out, and I said I'd get everyone out before 10 o'clock.